Lord God, we ask your blessings on each and every one of us here today. And Lord, at the end, we would have achieved our objective. And we ask these blessings in your name. I am Anne-Marie Montrose. I am representing the Grenada Employers Federation. As a member of the Minimum Wage Advisory Committee. We are happy to be in St. Patrick's today. We have been, if you have been following us, you know that we would have been having the Stonehalls meetings from the beginning of April. This is the penultimate one. Our final stop would be at Carracoom. Our objective here this evening is to include you in the discussions as we put forward recommendations to the cabinet on what the minimum wage in Grenada would be. We thought that it would be fitting to hear from you and get your ideas so that they can be included in our, in our report when we make those recommendations to cabinet later on in 2023 or early 2024. So I ask you to participate. We are here to hear from you and I encourage you to participate and give your recommendations and make your suggestions and have general discussions on whatever areas that you think that we should know about regarding the minimum wage in Grenada. Before I, we hear from you, I want to now invite Dr. Gilchrist, who is the chairman of the committee, to give you some brief remarks.
Good evening and to all the people from St. Patrick's. And thank you very much, Sister Montrose. I want to acknowledge the presence of the Minister for Finance, Honorable Cornwall at the back. We could barely see him, you can see the hand, that, that's great. And also I want to acknowledge the head table, so we do have, allow them to introduce themselves, eh? And just say who they represent to give us sense that this committee, you know, is comprised of representation from different sectors, yeah? Different, different interest group. So we do have Xavier, who is representing the Trade Union Council. And Mr. Mason, who slipped out shortly, for a very important reason, I suppose. And he's also representing the Trade Union Council. We do have representation from the Employers Federation that unfortunately they cannot make it today. And we have government representative, who also cannot make it today. So we do have a small team, but very capable. And we are very happy to, to, to make St. Patrick's what I call the, the final stop in terms of our engagement with the citizens of Grenada on this very important issue of, of minimum wage, yeah? And we have been meeting, just by way of background, while we are speaking to the citizens, we are also speaking to employers. Because you know, we have to balance the, the conversation. So we are meeting with employers, we have met with a number of them from different sectors. Speaking to them of the need to make an adjustment upward of the minimum wage. And the, the good news is that they have agreed that the wages as they are now at a minimum need to be increased. And, and they, and they have accepted that. We are at a point where we have to find that in our dung to a consensus figure that we can make recommendation to the minister responsible for labor, who then take that to the cabinet. So in our conversation to you, we want to hear from you. Your own experience as a, as an employee, whether or not the wage that you are currently receiving is just an equitable, yeah? In respect of your profession, so we want to, we want to hear from you. And in speaking to us tonight, in, in try, in making a case for, for raising incomes at, at different levels of occupation, you can put forward reasons why you think that there's a need to raise the minimum wage up to a point where you, it, it can, it can help you to acquire, you know, the basic things you need in life so that you can enjoy a satisfactory standard of living. But I just want to explain a little bit why, why at this point the government of Grenada is embarking on this initiative. Because the government of Grenada is very concerned about its citizens and the well-being of its citizens and that you are in a country where your income cannot, can, can afford you a certain standard of living. So it's all about raising people living standards. And in doing that, we have to look at the minimum wage. But even as, before I go further, from all the other consultations we have been having, we, we used to, we were accompanied by the Ministry of Agriculture and they were speaking to us on a food and nutrition security policy, yeah? And linking food and nutrition security to the minimum wage. So ladies and gentlemen, the wage that you receive must enable you to live a decent standard of living. And hence we are linking the idea of food and nutrition, your ability to acquire the food that you need so you can stay healthy, that you can be productive and that you can move forward in acquiring the things that you need so that you can enjoy a decent standard of living. So coming back to the context in which I was speaking, in terms of why is the government engaging on this minimum wage effort now? And by the way, just for information, the last time the minimum wage was adjusted was in the year 2011? So that's over, over 10 years now, that was the last time. And, and coincidentally, well, that was when the NDC administration was, was in office. So here, here, here we are, here the government is again looking at the issue of minimum wage. And since 2011, we know what happened to, to the, the power, the, the power of your paycheck, yeah? That paycheck, what happened to it in terms of this ability to, to, to purchase what you need and to maintain that? And I'm speaking about cost of living, we have seen what happened to cost of living over the last 10 years. And if you look at the food, the, the, the consumer price index basket, this is a basket of about, just about 300 items that the Central Statistics Office monitor the prices of on a monthly basis. And they use that to get a gauge of how inflation is, how cost of living is and what is inflation. And if you use that basket, although it's a bit old and I am, I'm being told that the basket is being updated and revised as you speak, but using that basket of goods, over the last 12 years, we have seen prices on average have increased by at least 13%. Now that is the average. So if you just take food, for example, and you compute it, you may get a figure around 20, 25%, yeah? So just the average. So, and if your salary remain the same, your wages remain the same and you have increased inflation, you know what happened to, to your, to the value of your paycheck? And, and so these are issues that are real and we have to confront it. And the government has the final mechanism to enable you to keep pace, yeah? With cost of living and be able to, 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 to continue to get value for money. Now hence the reason why we are taking this, this, this initiative now. I just want to recognize the Minister for Finance, Honorable Andal, he's my, my teacher, you know? Yeah, so value for money. So another reason why we are embarking on this initiative now is that when you increase the, the minimum wage, you are also contributing to the effort of reducing poverty. And, and here, here's what I'm seeing. Now, if you look at the last statistics in Grenada, it's a bit old, but still relevant, need to be updated. The poverty levels are around, around 25%. So if we, if we estimate the population to be 110,000, I'm saying estimate because I know they are, they are counting it now. So you'll get the true, you'll get the true figure later on. We have about 25,000 to 30,000 people considered poor. And by that I mean the income per month is less than $750. Yeah, so we do have the employees in Grenada working for $700 a month, 800, 900. If you match that against the cost of acquisition of various services and food just to, just to exist, it poses a challenge. So by adjusting the minimum wage, we are hoping that we'll be able to at least attend to that problem and push many people above the poverty line. So we're looking at a massive adjustment, yeah? We're looking at a massive adjustment. And we have been speaking to employers, I, I wouldn't give you details on that. But we have been speaking to them and the adjustment has to be impactful. It has to be real and it has to affect people. So we're looking at a massive adjustment, we have to face the challenges, yeah? Outside of that, why are we talking about the minimum wage? Because we're looking at the value we put to labor, the value we put to labor. We are looking at that, yeah? And that has been in some, in some part of the world, people rally around this issue of how you value labor. Revolution has been fought over this issue of, 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 of valuing labor, as we say in the working class, yeah? And, and adjust wage. So when we speak of a minimum wage in today's society, we are really talking about a just and equitable wage. That's where we bring the conversation to. We want what is just and what is equitable. And the conversation has gotten to the point where citizens are talking about their living wage. So here we are discussing a minimum wage and making attempts to realistically adjust it, of course, in collaboration and, and in agreement with, with employers, be mindful that, you know, it's a cost to them. But we are seeking to adjust that wage to a point where whatever we agreed at, you are able to live on it. So that's the way we are interpreting the minimum wage. We want to get it to a point where you can live. And I say just afford the basic things. It has to be a, a living wage, you must be able to live on the minimum wage. Not what exists now, because the minimum wage that exists now, you can't live on it. And we have heard stories throughout the consultation of people being challenged and having to, having to find other means of complementing the living wage so that it can exist. And we know the social consequences of, of these, these things that they have to do just to, just to afford the basic things of life. We want to raise our people dignity of work and, and the acquisition of income. So this is all part of why we are making effort and why the government is taking this initiative to raise the minimum wage, of course, in collaboration and in consultation with employers. So we are saying, ladies and gentlemen, that labor is a private element in, in creating wealth. And if wealth is created, then labor should get its fair share. That's all we are asking for and that's all I want you to think about. But we are also sending a message that on the other side, you got to earn your wage, yeah? What did the Bible say about that? By the sweat of thy brow, you should eat bread. So if a man didn't work, he shouldn't eat. Yeah, but let's, so I'm, I'm saying that while we are, while there's an effort and initiative to get employers to recognize that you, you work much more than what, what you produce and to give you fair value for what you produce, equal responsibility applies with your employee, right? To provide and work hard. So there's an equal responsibility for productivity. So we wouldn't get into the big argument of productivity and all of that. We know there are challenges there. But once we settle on this minimum wage, I'm sure that the Ministry of Labor will embark on an entire sensitization education program on productivity. So that will be, that, that will be the next, the next, you know, train that will be going around. Raising productivity, yeah? So that employers get the value, they get value. So, and finally, there are other implications for the, for the government and we do have the Minister of Finance here. And, and he will be happy to know that, that this effort would contribute towards raising Grenada general income and value of the country as a whole, the value of the economy. We have a population of, let's say, 110,000. Our gross domestic product, which is the value we put to, to all the goods and services that they produce in the country, is around $3 billion EC dollars now. Let's compare that to Antigua with a population of, let's give them 70,000 for argument's sake. And what is the, the value of what they produce in the country? About $7 billion, yeah, $7 billion. When we finish with this exercise, when you look at the value of our economy, value of what we produce, that will be much higher. And at the Ministry of Finance, all their fiscal ratios will now be recalibrating, yeah? So you get a better sense of what is worth. So the economy as we speak is being undervalued because of the low wages that we pay. It's being undervalued. We are hoping to, to address that by adjusting upwards the, the minimum wage. And of course, tonight, as we, we enter a conversation with you, I just want to, just give you a little bit of information because you need to know what you're talking about, the existing minimum wage. I can just read some of the, some of the, some of the wages that in law exist now. And as I, as I read these, these wages, I also want to remind us that above all, the minimum wage adjustment order is a protection mechanism. It's there to protect employees from employers who would misbehave. Okay, let me go bluntly, who would exploit workers, yeah? It's a protection, you have some protection in law. And we do have the Ministry of Labor here. So if you feel, once you have knowledge of this minimum wage order, and we are hoping that in this exercise, that, and that this will be publicized so people know their rights. When you get a job, you must know what the minimum wage is for that particular occupation. You must know that. And of course, if you are aggrieved, yeah? Or you feel that you are not getting what is in law, you can always call the Ministry of Labor, they are, they are very confidential and they'll treat your matter expeditiously, yeah? So don't be afraid that there'll be any leak of information and the employer getting to know that you complained and all of that. You could choose the Ministry of Labor, right? There's new leadership there and there's a new thing happening there. And they are very supportive of this committee that you see at the head table here. So just to give you a heads up of examples of how bad the situation is, if I should use such a term, clerical workers, for example. And by the way, as I read these figures here, one of the objectives we are seeking to, to achieve is to close the gap or to eradicate or to wipe that gap away between tongue and country. So if a carpenter gets $60, if you pay that carpenter $60, doesn't matter where he's located, he should be paid $60. That doesn't exist now. And you know what happened to the South where the wages tend to be higher? There's a push to the South. So it takes me all over to get to work because of the congestion in the South. There's a movement to the South because of the disparity and inequality in the way wages are being paid. We are hoping to equalize that as we make our recommendation to the government and adjusting the minimum wage. So doesn't matter where you work, equal work for what, equal pay of equal value. That's our principle. And of course, we are hoping with our recommendation that there'll be no gender discrimination. Doesn't matter if you're male or female or any other sex, equal work for equal pay. So these are some principles that are also we are using to drive the work that we do and we drive the recommendation that we put forward to the Minister of Labor so that she can take to the cabinet for a further deliberation. So for example, as it is now, the law, what's in law now, clerical workers, the, the minimum wage is $900 a month, but that's only in St. George's. Other parishes is $700. You, you see what I was saying about the poverty line? Poverty line is about $750, yeah? That's why statistically, we have so many people in Grenada classified as poor. I'm not talking about vulnerability because if you go there, you might get half the population. So I ain't talking about vulnerability, I just talking about straight poverty. Domestic workers, $35 per day. And of course, on the, on the, on the requirement that you work at least four days, at least four days per week. Caregivers, and we had tremendous recommendation in that era, respected caregivers. Look caring for the elderly, you know how important that is there? Caring for the elderly. The minimum wage is $700 per month, yeah, $700. What can you do with $700 per month? That's it now. Ladies and gentlemen, we are hoping we get some solid recommendation from you tonight on these things, how to adjust it based on your own experience and what do you see as value to these occupation? Well, construction workers, I, I must say, because of the shortage of skills in that area and the construction boom, the current wages there way above the middle. A, a first-class carpenter, for example, right now can, can attract, say, $130, $140 a day. But in law, it's just 100, yeah? So I think the, in the area of construction, because of the scarcity of skills, all right? And I just wanted to break to, to, to recognize the, the presence of the Minister of Labor. I think we have a good cadre of ministers here tonight, so, and that's great. So they will hear your recommendation. So you should feel free and encouraged and motivated to speak your mind, yeah? So that they don't, the minister don't have to wait on our recommendation now, they'll hear it from you, all right? And they'll know if we are reporting the right thing too, because they are here, here in it live. So we want to recognize the presence of the, of the Minister of Labor, right? The one that this committee has to report to, yeah? So Minister, we are owning our keep tonight. Thank you very much. I was just going through some of the, the wages that currently exist to give them a sense of where we are and the need for the adjustment. I just mentioning a few shopper assistants, for example, those clerical, not, well, that work at the stores and so, the minimum wage is $700 per month. And we have heard stories where even though this is the law, employers may seek to even lower than this. We have heard stories about that. A security guard, for example, in law is $8 per hour, right? Are the security companies paying above that, yeah? Are they paying above that? Do you think a security guard should get more than $8 per hour? So to get $80 a day, he has to work 10, 10 hours, yeah? And what if he has a family? And if he's a sole breadwinner for the household, yeah? So you see the challenges we, we face. So we are seeking to, to, to raise, I'm just giving you some, some, some examples. Domestic workers, all parishes, this time is across parishes, $35 per day. 35 per day for domestic worker. Any domestic workers in the house tonight? 25. Well, I, I must say, even though we have 25 hours per day in, in law, you could tell us if this is outdated, yeah? And what you think should be the going rate? You could tell us as a domestic worker, because I know the value of a domestic worker is tremendous. You know the way, just to get a bit technical a bit, you know the way we value goods and domestic workers are not considered, you know? So when I talk about the gross domestic product, it includes domestic workers, you know? This, this shortcut that, that we have yet to find a correct methodology to do it. So it's not being valued, so this is what I'm saying. When you put a true value to what we producing Grenada, the economy is bigger than you think. We are not just a $3 billion economy, we are a $6 billion, $7 billion economy. Just the valuation could, could, could go towards that. So these are some of the wages that currently exist. I thought I would just flag that. Cooks, for example, you know, in the hotel and hospitality industry, you got different levels. You have the chef, sous chef, and then you have the cook and so. A cook, for example, in law, the minimum wage payable is $700, $750 per month if you work in St. George's. Any other parish, any other parish is $600 per month, a cook. We talk about food and nutrition, we had to truly cook right. As we address the food and nutrition issue, we talk about health and safety and well-being. It's not, yes, we say grow what we eat and eat what we grow, but we had to cook it right. We mentioned the cooking part of the formula, you know? But that is important, the mix of ingredients that goes into the preparation of food to produce the, the, the nutrients that you need to stay healthy, a cook. But yet, we are putting a value of what, $600 per month for a cook, yeah? These are issues that we need to, we want to hear, hear you speak to us tonight about these things. Let your voices on tonight. So these are just some examples, yeah? And everywhere you read in the law, there's a disparity between working in St. George's and in other parishes, yeah? Part of the development agenda is to, is to balance development, rural development, to bring development to rural development, to bring development to the rural economy. As a matter of fact, in some countries, they, they seek to what you call urbanize the whole country. So there's no such thing as, there are countries today that there's no rural section, you know? Everything is urbanized. So we are seeking to bring development, and hopefully it will deal with some of these, these issues. So I, I thought I would have, I don't want to stay too long because I, I still could say much more. But tonight is about you speaking to us, asking the question, telling us your experience, giving us your recommendation. At the end of the day, we have to adjust these wages upwards, not downwards. We have to adjust them upwards. Yeah, so let us hear from you tonight. And our, our, our committees here to, to answer questions and provide explanation as far as possible. As I said, we have employers representative at the head table. So from the employer perspective, and we do have union representative from the employee perspective. Yeah, so, so, so I just want to end here. And I would ask Sister Montrouze to come back and just to, just to chair the next session of questions and answers. So she'll give you all the housekeeping matters regarding how you're going to interact with us tonight.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gilchrist. Quite a lot of food for thought here. I am sure you've had enough information to provoke your thoughts and to inspire questions and also to make recommendations. And this is the part of the session where we would hear from you what are some of the issues you're facing in your various sectors? And also to hear from you what are the recommendations that you would want us to take on board as we continue these discussions on the minimum wage? I just want to take the opportunity to welcome each and every one of our viewers online. Most of you have been with us through every one of those tongue hall meetings. We want to thank you very much for your continued support. We thank you for your comments. And we look forward to you, to your continued support as we journey to Caracun for our final tongue hall meeting. So at this point, I open the floor now to you. There's a mic at the, at the middle of, in the middle of the floor. You would indicate by show of hand, you would go up to the mic, make your comments, ask your questions. We are here at the head table, we can, we would facilitate your questions. We would try to answer you the best way we know how and take your recommendations as you put them forward this evening. The floor is now open. Yes? Minister Cornwall?
Good evening, Madame Moderator.
Good evening.
I want to recognize the head table also. I also want to recognize the ministers who are here today to support this event. Honorable Joseph Andel, Minister of Foreign Affairs, and MP for St. Patrick West. Also Senator the Honorable Claude Joseph, Minister of Legal Affairs and MP for St. George's tongue, or St. George, sorry. Now, I would have to make a comment and then I will basically ask a question. I must indeed say that Dr. Gilchrist would have given a wide ambit of what I think needs to be looked at in terms of getting the information out and what would basically constitute the evidence for need to basically adjust the minimum wage. I believe it's an exercise that is fruitful and it's going to be the basis on which we at the Cabinet would use the information to basically guide us in our decision-making. I know that there are various sectors that are involved in this whole issue of wages. And Dr. Gilchrist would have actually expanded on that, and I don't want to go there at this point in time. But I would want the committee to look at how do you basically bring some semblance of balance in this whole minimum wage review? I'll give an example of what I'm talking about. In the construction sector, you think that a lot of persons are going in that area as compared to going to agriculture. Because yes, the wages in construction is much more than probably what you get in the agricultural sector. And I believe we need to basically take that on board and find the right balance. Because if not, you could steward the whole economy in terms of where do we put our emphasis in terms of energizing productivity in the country? If agriculture for us is a basis for ensuring that we have food security and that we have enough to basically feed ourselves and export, I think we have to basically look at increasing or improving the wages in, in the agriculture sector, the agro-processing sector, as well as the domestic sector, i.e. domestic workers, a number of work areas that is not tied to the construction area itself. So the question I would ask the committee to look at is, in doing your work, please ensure that you find that balance between the various sectors, to ensure that there is no sector that is screwed out of the whole picture and that you do not lose the need to ensure that every sector grow in a way that could bring out increased productivity in us. Now, I know that the employers would have their concerns also because if you're asking me to pay more in terms of income, it means my production costs would go up. But that also should tell me that I need to have increased productivity in what is happening around us. In other words, an employee would not just go to work and do the same thing over and over in the same old way. He has to show commitment and willpower to increase the productivity. All that is tied to ensuring that our GDP is also increased. And once our GDP is increased to a level where it can support the increases that we are going to be looking forward in the economy as a whole, I believe we are on the right track to ensure that our country grows. That's where I want to stop at the moment. Thank you.
Minister Cornwall, for your remark, for your, and for your questions. But if I may comment here, I believe that agriculture is one of the sectors that is being considered for the minimum wage adjustment. As a matter of fact, Dr. Gilchrist, I think we've added some other sectors that was not previously mentioned or included in the Minimum Wage Act. And so, Dr. Gilchrist, if you would, if you don't mind, you would comment on, on, on those new sectors?
Yes, and I, I thank the Minister for Finance. And that is exactly what we're trying to do, is to, is to balance it. And, and because wages can, can, you know, we don't want, there, there is competition between, among sectors and between sectors for, for wages, especially at the lower end. A laborer, for example, might find it more lucrative to go and do construction than do farming, because it gets more. So we are, we are, that, that is a matter that we, we would make recommendations to adjust and correct, you know, to restore balance there. And so your point is, is well taken. This time round, there are emerging sectors, emerging occupation. We know there's a great incentive to push the creative economy, the creative industry, so there will be emerging, emerging occupations there and the whole era of information and technology, you know, as we get into the digital, digital economy and the digital world. So there are emerging occupation and, 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 and job titles that, that we are going to take on board in making recommendation for entry-level positions. Yeah? Because there are certain sectors right now, from our discussion, they have no, no employee working for less than, say, fourteen hundred dollars a month. Yeah? No employee. There are sectors, we call high, high wage, high wage sectors. No employee work for less than fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred dollars a month. Under other sectors, you get seven. Yeah, so we are, also to mention the, the media, we're giving special attention to, to media workers. And we, that, that's an occupation that is grossly, grossly underpaid. So we are paying attention to that. But generally speaking, the media, media professionals, occupations in, in the IT sector, and the creative economy, the creative arts, you know, we, we would be making recommendation in those areas as a way of jump-starting the, the attraction to that sector with respect to, to, to labor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gilchrist. Also, I wanted to speak a little bit about productivity. I think this word productivity has been mentioned in every one of our tongue hall meetings. I get the feeling that employers are concerned about what would happen to productivity once the wages are, are increased. Because I, I think, I get the feeling that there is a fair that will be increasing wages, but we would not see increasing productivity. And that's quite fair. As an employer representative myself, I, I would want to know that, once I am paying you for a service, that I am getting my monies, I'm getting value for what I am paying you to do. So I think the whole question of performance management has to be, if it has never been part of an organization's culture before, it now has to be included in the operations of the organization to ensure that what you are paying for is adequately measured and that your productivity and that you get value for what you are paying. So thank you very much, Dr. Cornwall, for those provoking concerns. Anybody else? I know you have a lot to say, and this is the opportunity for you to get your concerns heard. No questions? Anybody have any suggestion, any recommendation? You've heard what the present wages are for the different sectors. Do you think those wages are adequate today? How much do you think we should increase it by? These are the kind of, of, of suggestions and recommendations we want from you. Do you think that, for example, a domestic worker, a seven hundred dollars is adequate for that person in 2023? Anybody?
Good afternoon to everybody. All the ministers are here, and the personnels who take the time out to listen vividly is what that, as what is to be discussed pertaining to wages. My name is Denston Charles, I'm from Roswell. My take on that is that I'm very uncomfortable with that figures that are being quoted or called out pertaining to payment to human beings. I mean, everybody is working, I would assume that they work for their even pay, but it's not, the work is more than the pay is, is given, you know? Hearing the, the, the numbers, the figures that are being rolled out there has me laughing but not happy. You know, it's, it's sad to hear that figures are being paid for, for a domestic worker. This is just for us. Ramen and all has gone up, so what are they gonna eat? You know, it's sad, it's sad. It's, it's funny, but it's sad, because when you sit and you listen, persons putting, a lot of people work these days, they hear a figure, they work, they take the work because they has nothing else. But then when they add all the, they, they really sit and do economics. What, 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 what do we have in, in hand? And then you watch events and everybody don't want to be left out. They still want to participate in an event and buy a little drink. But when at the end of the day, the morning now they had to beg a bus driver for a ride, that is sad. It cannot sus, that cannot sustain life. That can't even send a school child to school. So I, I personally believe that something needs to be done. It needs to go back to the mathematical table and be properly drafted, percentaged. Any equation that could be disrupted from the old findings or the old table that is there, it should, it should be revamped and, and brought back into a more, a brighter perspective whereby we could view it from our horizon and be thankful that we're going to work and we not, we're not overworking ourselves for a lesser income. Security on a whole too, I think they, they are the, and, and are generalizing it, so it's not just security, because police herself are, are being underpaid. But sticking a pin on security is that while we sleep, business owners, places are being secured. And they are the one eating steak while the, the, the workers are not, cannot even sustain their life. You would watch they have their tire and the other stuff, and they cannot even afford proper uniform. So no, it's sad. And that is my, that is my, my two cents on it.
Before you go, thank you very much for your, for your comments. But if I may ask, what do you think would be a decent minimum wage?
Well, I will have to do my calculations, I cannot give you that fresh shit off my head.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, given, at least, I mean, I can't say, but there is something called dollar for dollar in a different, in, in every country. And if you go to compare it to, I'll have traveled and I show, even if we put a dollar to the dollar to Trinidad, a security worker in Trinidad don't work for eight dollars an hour, even if you do the conversion. So we should do a little regional, because we're not in the States, I can't compare it to the States where they work for at least twenty-two dollars an hour. But we could do it regional and see what, how our economics balance and come to something amicable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Good evening to everyone. So the question of the minimum wage is what has triggered that off? So I'm not speaking necessarily about minimum wage per se. But we have an elephant in the room in Grenada. There is no doubt that workers have to be given a better deal in terms of the so-called living wage, however the economists and others calculate that to be. But we have a situation where a lot of people are unemployed, yet paradoxically, there are still a lot of jobs going begging. So as part of, or maybe as an extension to the minimum, minimum wage debate, we have to start thinking from the level of government, but from a wider societal level of how do we change or get our people to start thinking beyond simply working for a survival wage into becoming more skilled and more versatile? What is the direction our economy is taking? Our economy, our economy has, over the years, become more and more service-oriented. Tourism, financial services, and so on. Yet, when you look at the school curriculum, when you look at young people applying for government scholarships, what is the trend, where are they going? We are still thinking traditional. We are still thinking traditional. So everybody still wants to go and study psychology and management of business and so on. Now, I'm not knocking these professions, all right? I too cut my teeth in the social sciences. So it's all a question of knocking it. But we have to start becoming practical and start looking at the direction that the local as well as the international economy are moving and start tailoring our curriculum to suit that and start encouraging our young people and investing in the digital, digital economy, in the technical fields and so on. Right now, I'm shopping for a plumber, literally shopping for a plumber. And I have to wait until one is free. So it means that there are opportunities for people to become meaningfully employed, even self-employed at way beyond minimum wage in professions and occupations where you can call the shots. So as important as it is for us to consider lifting the minimum wage and ensuring that we do not have an army of people barely surviving, it is even more crucial that individuals, government, society as a whole, start thinking about getting people into areas where you can make good money, you can invest, you can pull yourselves and your families up. And if we do not go in that direction, then the question of the minimum wage will become like a recurring decimal. So this is a sort of appeal to everyone to start having what I call a mindset reset in terms of how we view education, how we view the job market, and how we see ourselves becoming productively engaged to move our country forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Minister Andal. Um, if I may comment here, I am an advocate for skill training. I see the need every day for our people to be come skilled, certified in the various skills. Like like Minister Andal, I'm not knocking other professions. But I have seen there are, there are persons out there with, who just have a natural knack for skills, but it is not part of the school curriculum. And some of these people, they get lost through the system. And there is no, there is no appeal after after school to enter the secular jobs. And so they are kind of left hanging. And so I do have a passion for the area of skill training. And um, I know that there is a push now by the NTA to get persons certified in the specific area of skills. For example, I know there are persons who are electricians, but they are not certified. I know that the NTA now is moving in that direction to ensure that all persons who practice and provide service, they are adequately certified. So thank you very much, Minister Andal, for those thought-provoking remarks.
Let me just address an issue that is recurring regularly on the street regarding minimum wage discussion. And there is the perception that if you increase the minimum wage, workers will be sent home. I want to just give you a comparison. Everybody minimum wage was for certain categories in 2002 compared to 2011. And if you know of anybody who loves the job, tell me. In 2002, bar men were getting five fifty per month, 2002. That was the minimum. In 2011, it was increased to seven fifty. I hear nobody loves their work. Then cooks. Cooks in 2002 were paid six hundred dollars per month. If you worked in St. George's, if you worked in St. George, St. David, and Carricko, you got six hundred dollars per month in 2002. And all other parishes, if you were a cook, you got four hundred and fifty dollars per month. In 2011, it was increased to St. George, St. David, and Carricko, seven fifty. And all other parishes, six hundred dollars. So the euphoria that is being generated out there that if you increase minimum wage, workers will be sent home. The facts does not prove that. As a matter of fact, in 2002, the workforce was much less than now. And people of the doctor said disposable income continues to diminish. One dollar is no longer one hundred cents. Because if the inflation rate is four percent, it means four cents of a dollar is gone even before you spend it. So it's ninety-six cents. And we knew that the Minimum Wage Committee, which we represent, is a body appointed by the cabinet. After our deliberations are exhausted, the chairman, Dr. Gilchrist, has to present his report to the minister. The minister and her colleagues go to cabinet and look at it and decide where they will go. But we can't do anything as the committee unless we hear from you. We are not here to tell you that we are going to increase minimum wage by X or by Y. You are the ones who are depending on to give us the suggestions. I also want to enlighten the people that once the minimum wage is discussed by cabinet and it goes to parliament, it is then voted in parliament. And if it is given the eyes, it then becomes the minimum wage order, which is a legal document. And the law says, the labor code says, that every workplace should have this posted up in the workplace. Every workplace should have the minimum wage order posted so that workers can know what their wages are. So we expect you to speak, we expect you to give us a suggestion. Um, feel free, be as imaginative as possible. You can look at hourly, you can look at weekly, you can look at daily, look at fortnightly, look at monthly, but just talk to us. Tell us what you think. Um, the question was asked, um, are you satisfied with the wages paid for caregivers? I I can also ask, are you satisfied with the wages paid to um, shop attendants? Which is the more predominant employment in in our traditional retail business, shop assistant? Um, it is presently seven fifty. Um, in two thousand and two, it was four fifty. In two thousand and two, the salary for shop assistants was four fifty. And in all parishes, but in St. George's, sorry, in all parishes, it was four hundred dollars, but in St. George's it was four fifty. That was in 2002. So we are looking at a situation where the reality is is in black and white. No one could dispute that there have been some increases and no one loves their job. So let's get rid of that myth. We would not do anything that will imperil the economy. We don't have the authority. We are just here to hear your suggestions, note it, and send it to the minister.
Thank you very much for that interjection there, Brother Mason. We would like to hear from you. Are there any person here who's employed as a caregiver? Or would you like to share your experience with what your, how does the minimum wage affect you? Yes, there is a mic in the middle of the floor.
Good evening, my dear sister. My name is Kizzy Saint Louis. Um, minimum wage affects not only me, but everyone in in my neighborhood, my parish, my country, my everything. I used to work for six hundred and forty-seven dollars a month. And that is coming from, I have to use that money to pay bills, buy grocery, and also bus. Transportation from St. Patrick's to St. George's every day except Sunday. Now, um, that's six forty-seven a month, doesn't cover nothing. But it used to work for me in the sense of I used to get help. But now you want to increase minimum wage. How much are you looking to increase it? And when are we going to get a feedback on when you're going to increase it? And how soon?
Well, this is the reason we're here, to hear from you.
Oh, you guys need to increase more than six something a month and seven something a month.
So we're here to hear from you.
A thousand dollars a month would be good.
A thousand dollars, that's what we, that's the kind of feedback we are looking for. What do you think is a reasonable amount of money as a living, a wage, a person should own in this country? So we starting to get somewhere. So you're saying a thousand dollars minimum? So can, can, sister, can you come back up to the mic, please? So we starting to get somewhere. So we, we heard one thousand as a, as a minimum. Anybody else have another suggestion? Or you want to share your own experience? Like this sister just shared her experience. And right away, we see that it can't work. From St. Patrick's to St. George's, six days a week on six hundred and forty-seven dollars? Yes, sis? The mic, go to the mic. No, for the people online.
You have to reach in St. George's for at least six, five. Majority of us who travel from St. George's, from St. Patrick's to St. George's, um, we have a problem also with transportation. And to get up and be in St. George's for early period of time. Our employers or employees sometimes do not appreciate us. So we tend to scheme on work because of that situation. It is not to say that we're not putting out our best or best foot forward, but when you realize that you're getting up five in the morning, six in the morning to be in St. George's, and then you get there, and if you have a discussion with your employer, they would say, oh, I don't care about you, I care about my work. No, as an employee, what would you do about that? What would you say about that? You can't, even though you go to labor and complain about your boss, what they used to say, oh, we're going to have a discussion with your boss and see how we can get something and get some work. And nothing has been done in the past. For the future now, I don't know where you guys are going to be with that whole entire thing. But the mindset is also has to be changed with our boss and employees. So even though you want to increase, how well would the bosses and them take to increasing your pay?
So what we are saying is that once that minimum wage is set, your employer cannot pay you less than that amount. And if they do, there is the Ministry of Labor where you can file a complaint. You've talked about the the tardiness in getting a resolution. I promise you that once you file a legitimate complaint with the Ministry of Labor, it will be dealt with in the quickest possible time.
Okay, I'm hearing all you, I want to see.
Next person?
Good evening.
Good evening, my dear sister.
So I didn't get everything, but I got the minimum wage for cooks. And that one had me taken aback because I'm a teacher. So the cook's minimum wage is, I saw something that said six fifty or six hundred. Right, and then we have
It is now seven fifty.
Oh, it's now seven fifty, okay. And then now we have the cooks, they have trainees in the kitchen with them, working for a thousand dollars. Yes, for that I was kind of taken aback. So the trainees are working for more money than the actual cooks in the kitchen.
Wow.
That's, no, so if it's only for the cooks, we need to increase it because it's not fair. It could never be fair for you to be the one employed by the government and working for less money than who actually training under the, say, Imani program. Or this could never be fair. So that is just the So that is just the comment, the only concern that I have. For the cooks, it's unfair.
All right, so as a teacher, I want to put you on the spot here. How, what is the fair wage you think that a cook at your school should earn?
I wouldn't say a thousand dollars because a thousand dollars really can't do anything. So maybe start them off at a thousand five, I'm not, a thousand dollars is nothing. When you have bills, you have cost of living going up and everything. A thousand dollars is really, a thousand dollars is still minimum. So a thousand five, maybe even, if I said two thousand, I'll be stretching it. But at least not a thousand. And the cooks, they actually are the ones coming, these cooks come to school earlier than the teachers because remember, they have to come, take out the meat, prepare, do all of that. It's just unfair. So at least if they're getting seven fifty now and they get a thousand five, at least they, they, they would be pleased with that.
Okay.
So yeah, let's start them off there.
All right, thank you for your, for your suggestions, teacher.
Let me just make a correction quickly. St. George's, St. David Carrick, seven fifty, but all other parishes, six hundred dollars.
I just want to say to the teacher that the same problem exists in the homes. There exists in the homes, where you have persons employed in the homes for fifteen, twenty years, getting seven fifty, eight hundred dollars. And then you have these trainees come in and making a thousand dollars. In a unionized environment, we were able to address it and correct it. But when you're outside of a unionized environment, the conversation is different, all right? So I just wanted to make that point. And we have the person with a pulse here. The person that's addressing Foreign Affairs here, and we have the Minister of Labor here. So I think we have a good mix. I just wanted to also raise that there are other sectors that are experiencing the same problem. Let me just, as I have the mic. As Brother Mason said earlier, that there is this conversation. And I guess that workers are not being fearful. People that really don't understand fully how the minimum wage works. Are fearful that if you increase the minimum wage, then there's a possibility of they losing their jobs. But I just also want to say to this person that in a lot of workplaces in Grenada, where there are no unions, employers paid workers for the last twelve years the minimum wage from two thousand and eleven. And that is a fact. So I'm saying to workers, the people that have this fear, that you were exploited for the last twelve years. The value of your, your income, because if you are getting seven hundred dollars in two thousand and eleven, I can tell you in two thousand and twenty-three, that is about three hundred dollars. So that whereas you have produced over those period, your value have decreased tremendously. So I just want to say that to workers too. So that it is necessary, if we are to go forward and for you to live not an extravagant life, but basic, satisfy your basic needs, that we need to address the minimum wage. And it is not a salary increase. It is just taking care of bringing you to what that value should be. And I say to people that are engaged, what we're trying to do is to ensure that what you, the basket of groceries or whatever you paid seven hundred dollars for in two thousand and eleven, that if you use that same basket, you could pay for it in two thousand and twenty-three. And I'm telling you, you may have to pay much more. I know you will have to pay much more than the seven hundred dollars. And as the sister said, it may be close to fifteen hundred dollars or more. Especially food items. Food item over the last two to three years, there's no doubt. As Dr. Gilchrist said, we are looking at maybe twenty-something percent. And persons who are in a construction area, and I speak of home builders, people who decide to build a home. If you look at the price of lumber over the last two years, three years, you'll realize that what a hundred thousand dollars house look like, you may have to pay over two hundred thousand dollars for that house now. So I'm saying that there is a need for us to address those issues and a serious need for us to look at increasing the minimum wage. But I must also say that in all the town halls that we have had so far, and I'm surprised. I know St. Patrick's is a place of a lot of culture, a lot of Calypsonians. People, I got impression that when I reached in St. Patrick's, people are stuck. But I'm saying, I'm disappointed that we are so quiet. We have not had that experience in any other parish. So I'm telling you that to get you warmed up and for you to start seeing something.
Thank you, Brother Xavier, for putting some structure to those comments made by our dear sister. Yes?
Two things while you were speaking came to mind. First is, is there a public listing of what the minimum wage is around? Is it, is it publicized? Or is it personal?
Should be, and as the brother said earlier, the law speaks to that. And the law say that employers must post in the workplace the minimum wage, all right? Those are affected by it, must post the minimum wage. So it's a requirement in law. The question now is that we need to ensure that it is enforced.
Yeah, how long?
How long ago?
That it should be posted.
Well.
I've been working for quite a while and I've never seen such a list.
Yeah, but I'm saying it is in the law, right?
So I'm asking how long in the law has it been there?
Well, I'm telling you, this has been in the law for.
Because to be honest, if, if, if this, if this list has been offered up before persons are employed, they would not take employment, knowing that they're getting this figure. That's why we have a lot of entrepreneurs outside here now. Because persons take to make more money by themselves. They see more money coming in their hand than working for someone and getting a portion, a fraction of a portion.
But the law says, I just want to read very quickly. Every employer affected by a minimum wage order shall post in a conspicuous place in noticefully informing the employees of the content of the order. That is in law. So we need to ensure that the employer really obey the law in this instance.
Anybody here have walked to any place and seen such a list? I'm curious, maybe I'm blind to that.
The law goes further and says.
We know it's embedded in the system, but is, is it being practiced? That is my question. It's not, it's not being practiced.
The opportunity is given today to educate. So from today, quarter to eight, and this is the third day of May, two thousand and twenty-three, that should change our thinking that these things exist. And we just have to go to the government print room and ask for a copy of the minimum wage order, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and two, and two thousand and eleven.
Thank you.
I don't know how much it costs, but I want to make another point. The law says that if an employer does not pay the minimum, that employer can be charged ten thousand dollars or three years in prison or both. The, the, the law says that.
And secondly, the, the, the teacher was mentioning the price, the, the minimum pay. I did my, I did a rough calculation also, and a bus conductor, not to belittle them, a bus conductor is at least working for fourteen hundred dollars a month. And in all honesty, a bus could do it without a bus conductor. And then we have people taking care of elderly, people cooking, and they are working for less than that. And basic bus conductors, some of them, they don't, they don't even have responsibilities. So these are people with response, these things need to be taken into consideration, in my view. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, brother. Somebody had their hand up at the back? Anybody else?
I, I thought I saw somebody hand at the back.
I thought so too. And no, I'm not seeing things.
Do you want us to bring the mic more to the back? I mean, that, that would help. Yeah, but I think we, we, we making progress now, we, we, we getting there. And how about farming? Let's talk agriculture. I think Mr. Carver mentioned agriculture. How about agriculture? What's happening there with wages? Are you happy? Farming, including fishing and all, all that. Once you interfere with nature, is agriculture. St. Patrick's is very, is very happy tonight.
So maybe I could be a little bit more engaging. What sector are you employed in? The lady closest to the mic. Could you use the mic? We're not hearing you.
Clerical.
You're clerical?
Yes.
And are you happy with what the current minimum wage is?
Yes.
Seven hundred, seven hundred. Oh, no, we're not talking about you being, we're talking about what currently obtains in law. Seven hundred dollars.
No, no, no.
Right, so what would you, what would be, if you had to give us a recommendation this evening, what would you recommend that we, that we consider as a minimum wage for your, for clerical persons?
I would say about fifteen hundred.
About fifteen hundred as a base?
Yes.
All right, thank you. What about the lady in red? What industry, what sector are you employed in?
Self-employed.
Okay, self-employed, what, what industry?
Food.
Oh, you're caterer?
Yeah, I do food.
Okay.
But I have a niece, and I was giving everybody a chance. Good evening to everybody. She do a nail tech. She leaves Shantimel, going to St. George's every day, and then go on to Lancerpin. She have to pay a bus from Shantimel to St. George's, then take her next bus to Lancerpin. So like in one day, she would spend fifteen dollars for bus. So within a month, her bus fare would be at least three hundred dollars. And then the, the work, the person who she working with would only pay thirteen hundred dollars at the end of the month, which, which is unfair. So by the time she, she pay three hundred dollars for bus, she end up with a thousand dollars. Then you have to buy lunch, then she have a child to take care of, she have her bills. So it's like nothing.
Okay.
So when you look at it, minimum wage need to be addressed.
Okay, so in that particular, in the beauty industry?
Yes, not only there, but even in the, like when you go to the store, the shops. A lot of the, the, the store workers, they're working for very little money. The owner of the business is making quite a bit of money. But they're giving the workers pitons.
Yeah.
And I think this is very unfair. That's why some of the times you go into some institutions, and when you get there, the workers don't have any zeal to walk. They would be there picking the nails because if you're not being paid, you'd have no zeal to walk.
Okay, yeah.
So they need to be paid in order that they would be able to produce.
Right.
That's right, we need dollars for, you know, we need some papers.
So what would be your recommendation to us for a minimum wage?
Well, we could start with fifteen hundred dollars, it's not bad.
Okay, fifteen hundred.
But then again, fifteen hundred dollars would be, depends on what the person is doing. Yeah, it depends on what sector you're in.
Yeah.
Then you pay based on, because you can't tell me a nail tech and a, a cook would have to be working for the same money because that person would be doing massage, they would, they're making you look pretty. So you have to pay for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But in, but for that, in, for that sector, for the beauty sector, you would recommend a fifteen hundred dollars?
No, for the beauty sector, you need to go a bit higher.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because you have, you can pay, when you want to look nice and you get inside it, when you step out, you look like a million dollars. So if you're looking like a million dollars, that person should be paid handsomely just as well.
All right.
Thanks.
What about the gentleman at the back? What sector are you employed in, sir? Yes?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm self-employed.
Okay, in what, what area?
Well, I'm a fisherman and plus I have a small business.
All right, so let's talk fishing.
Yeah.
What, for persons who are employed, so you have employees or you're?
No.
Okay, but for persons who are, are employed with, within the fishing industry, what would you recommend as a minimum wage?
Well, at the moment for the fishing industry, I feel it's, it's good because fish price is like nine and ten dollars at, at this time now. So to me, it's, it's okay. But like people who work in stores and other places, I think the minimum wage is need to go up. It's not, it's not satisfactory.
And what would be your recommendation to us?
I'd say about fifteen hundred to start.
Okay.
I'll depend on the sector.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say fifteen hundred to start. Because like the people working in Indian stores, they make about thirty-five dollars a day. Come on, that's, some even work for twenty-five. That's, that's nothing. That's nothing, that's nothing, you can't live out of that.
And besides that, they, they, I know that they, they work long hours as well.
It is long hours, some have to leave from Sotest to go to Granville.
Yeah.
You still have to pay four fifty, by the end of the day, you're paying nine dollars. And if you have to buy lunch.
Yeah.
You, 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 you're already in a hole, so we need to bomb this thing up.
Yeah.
And I believe we could start with, with fifteen hundred.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Yes, yes.
Because he said that a pound of fish is ten dollars. If you're working for seven fifty, how much fish can you buy? How much fish can you buy?
Yes, I get you.
Just want to make a comment. Fisherman, yeah? As you reported in your shows, how many people are paid pennies? I want to also say that there's a other issue that is as serious and that has to do with occupational health and safety. Some of these stores don't have facility for people to even sit and have a meal. All right, you, you, there is, even when you go to them stores and you watch how they are, they are set up in terms of the, the, the way they display their items and so on, and how they are crowded. Workers inside, they really don't have an opportunity, as I said before, to sit, have a meal, to, to, to have a proper meal break. Some of them to me, in terms of risk, the risk is very high. So I think apart from the monies, that aspect is something that really need to be addressed.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to share with us? Do we have any farmers in the house? Anyone in construction? Thank you very much for coming forward.
And I have some concerns and, and other matters that I would like to share. It's okay with, with wage increase, that's fine, and we welcome that. I know workers will be happy to get a raise. But my concern is. But my concern is income. Income and expenditure. If you have the money, you collect the money, fine. We have measures in place to collect our taxes for people who are not paying taxes, to pay their taxes. And, you know, collection. We should have enough income so that we can have a balance. So that's one. Production. We tend to, you know, we get wage increases, and we do not have proper job descriptions. So sometimes workers don't even, they're reluctant to do the additional work. So it comes with our job description. I see it happen, that you do not want to do more because of the type of, the amount of money that you make. Right, they're reluctant to participate in extracurricular activities. So I think you have to have a balance. You must have a balance where the mindset of people has to change. So we get more money, we expect to produce more. Right, and then we have no problem. We could enjoy life. Then for the agriculture sector, well, I'm a retired principal, so I'm into farming. And we did a program, I did a program with the agriculture program that they had forty-five dollars a day. I mean, you don't expect workers to work for a long period of time for forty-five dollars a day. I mean, that was really, in fact, I got some assistance in the program, but I had to add on, because I find the work, the salary was too low. So I gave them a few extra dollars, you know, so that you can encourage them to produce more. Yes, so I think that agriculture workers, especially, you know, when they, clearing the land is hard, hard work. Cutlassing and doing and picking cocoa and picking up nutmeg is hard work. Right, so we need to watch that sector to see how we can increase. I would love for them to have an increase there, you know? But then again, like I said, give them something decent, something reasonable, and I know that they will be willing to produce more. So what they're having now, forty-five dollars, you get two hours' work, and that's it, the fine is enough. And we can't blame them for that. So production is key, that I think we should look at. So it comes with different sectors. You should look at different sectors with regards to what kind of increase.
Yeah.
Right, so like she was saying, you know, in the beauty shop, you know, you get more, you cooks, you know, it varies.
Yeah.
Right, it can vary. But I see the need for that wage to increase, right? Based on the cost of living. You go in in a supermarket, and you come out there with five hundred dollars in a little plastic bag. And when you go to the shop today for three dollars, you see an item for three dollars and ten cents. And tomorrow, when you go back, it's three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Yeah, yeah.
We do not have price controllers. So the business places just jack up prices at their own free will when they feel to.
Yeah.
Right, I think this has to be controlled.
Yeah.
Right, so we need to put measures in place to ensure that we stabilize, you know, the cost of items, you know, goods. We should do something about that, pay more attention to that as well. So these are just my concerns. And once we can collect properly, then we can pay salaries properly. All right, that's my take.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. And I assure you that all of the sector, the agriculture sector in particular that you mentioned, that sector is under review for adjustment to the... As a matter of fact, all sectors are under consideration for increase. So no sector would be left out. Anybody else? Say that again? No, no, no. That's why we're here, to hear from, to hear from you.
Into my mind.
Uh huh.
I also say if there is an increase in salaries, they will take off some of the pressure of the government just as well. If somebody have to go to the government for two piece of board when they getting seven fifty, when they getting like a thousand five hundred, they would be able to go and buy two piece of board.
Yeah.
That pressure would be off the government.
Very good point.
So then it would be very, it would be a lot better, a lot of pressure would be off the government.
Yeah.
When they have something to play with, they would be able to spend more.
Yes. Thank you. Very good point there.
I missed something. With regards to the agriculture sector, I want to make mention of nutmeg and cocoa. Cost of nutmeg and cocoa to pay salaries. You operating with a deficit all the time.
Okay.
Especially for small farmers. Right, small farmers. I think there is need for increase in prices if we have to pay workers more.
Okay.
Nutmeg prices and cocoa prices. We can't say, oh, that this is traditional crops, let us do away with it.
Yeah.
Right? Everybody can be planting, you know, planting alone or something. Nutmeg and cocoa is there, what are we to do with it? Cut it down?
Yeah.
We can't cut it down, it's there. But we need people to work, because you can't do it. So we need to address the prices of nutmeg and cocoa.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you for that. I want to give everybody the opportunity to speak.
Hello, afternoon, everyone.
Good evening.
Yeah, well, wage minimum conversation is fine, but there is a lot of disparity between others people, like if you, for example, domestic workers make thirty-five dollars a day. What about the elderly people who are on fixed income, such as pensions and the seed money and stuff like that? So if they have to pay their domestic worker more money, how are they able to afford it with the current situation of their fixed income and the type of money they get through the seed program and all these things? Yeah, that's just my question.
Thank you very much, sir. And that is something that we would take into consideration. We have time for one more question, one more comment. Yes?
Good evening again.
Yes.
So I'm not sure if this is the correct forum, but I have a question. I want to know what is the minimum wage for police officers? Miss Sandal, you going to answer me? Oh, thank you.
So, as far as I'm aware, government employees in the established public service, teachers, those who work in ministries and so on, they are generally given wage and salary increases on the basis of collective bargaining, which is carried out between their unions. Or, in the case of the police, they do not have a trade union, but they have a body that negotiates on their behalf with the government. The name doesn't come to mind offhand. Police Welfare Association. I think prisons are similar to that. So the norm has been that when government negotiates with the unions, whether they negotiate collectively or individually, that generally, whatever agreement is arrived at tends to hold for all of the other employees of the government. So let's, in the event that they negotiate separately, let's say, for example, we have a case in point right now, where the teachers' union and the government have already settled at four percent, four percent, and five percent over a three-year period. The public workers have not yet settled with the government. So more than likely, based on tradition, the same would hold. But suppose, public workers down the road are able to get a bigger increase from the government, then automatically, teachers will go up to meet them. And the same holds for the police and so on. So, and then in a government system, you have different grades at which people enter and are paid. So within a particular grade, whether it be A, B, C, D, or what, there is a band. So you might start, for example, at fifteen hundred dollars, and you can go over a period of three, four, whatever number of years, up to a maximum of, I'm just calling figures for ease of conversation, yeah? So you might start with fifteen, and three years later, go up to seventeen, until a new collective bargaining agreement is arrived at, and then everybody goes up to soon. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you, Miss Sandal. So the other thing is, okay, so I heard it's the welfare, the police welfare that goes into bargaining for them. I said I'm not sure it's the correct forum, but my thing is, I personally find the police salary is very, it's very low. Too low. And like the standard salary is low, and they beef it up with a set of wages, wage for uniform, wage for this, wage for that. And their basic salary is low, and if they have to give like a raise, they don't give it on the wages, but they give it on the standard, like the basic. So for example, a police salary might be like two thousand dollars, and they give you four hundred for that, five hundred for this, one fifty for that. And to me, that makes no sense. Just bring up their people's salary to a standard, something where they can live comfortably, instead of all the wages, wages. And then when you get an increase, it's not on the entire salary, but just the basic, which is low, minimum. So I'm not sure if this is the correct forum, but you all can look into it for us, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments there. So we've come to the end of the question and answer section. I want to thank you very much for your questions, your comments, your recommendations, even the concerns that you shared. We want to thank you very much for coming out today and for sharing with us. I now call my colleague to give you some closing remarks.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Monroe. This has been a very refreshing exercise, wasn't it? Yes, this has been the best we have had. I want to thank our Facebook viewers, our online viewers, the people who contributed. And as we go forward, we have only curriculum remaining. As we said, we will wrap up after that, and the report will be presented to the minister. We thank the Minister for Foreign Affairs and MP for Saint Patrick West, and also the Minister for Finance and MP for Saint Patrick East for being here. And also our irrepressible Senator for Labor, Senator Collette Joseph. We thank you all, and we trust that your points which you raise will be given serious consideration. And at the end of it, you will be proud of what we did. God bless you, Mrs. Collette. I think you should say something, man. Right, I now present our Minister for Labor, Senator Collette Joseph.
Good evening, everyone on the head table, members of the Minimum Wages Advisory Committee. My colleague Cabinet Ministers, Minister of Finance, Honorable Dennis Cornwall, and Minister for Foreign Affairs and Trade, Honorable Joseph Sandal, the two MPs for the Saint Patrick Parish. Just quickly, first, let me apologize. I had a prior engagement in Saint George's and got up here as speedily as I could, but missed the opening where I would normally make some remarks. But I heard a few questions asked, and I thought that I would just bring a little clarity just for our collective benefit and edification. Now, the requirement for the setting of the minimum wage is contained in the Employment Act. And the law requires that the minimum wages for categories of workers considered as laborers, who are often, very often, un-unionized workers, be reviewed and adjusted every three years. The last adjustment we had in the minimum wages was in 2011. So that there should have been three adjustments in between the last one and this exercise we are undertaking. The categories of workers covered under the minimum wages order, and we can't go outside of that. We can't go into police and public officers and so, because as my colleague, Mr. Sandal explained, wages and salaries for unionized workers, government workers generally, are set under a different mechanism, also provided for in the labor code. But it's a different, a different method, which involved bargaining and negotiations between employer and the unions for whom the workers are represented, or by whom or by which the workers are represented. And that include government as an employer. So the people in relation to whom the minimum wages exercise will apply would be industrial workers, so people in light manufacturing, garment factories, that kind of thing. Clerical workers, security guards, domestic workers, caregivers of the elderly. We hope to expand to include caregivers of children, people who work in daycare businesses and so, workers in bakeries and shops, agricultural workers, construction workers, and all the categories are listed there, like the masons, the plumbers, the electricians, all of them. The carpenters, then shop assistants, workers in the hospitality industry, so you're talking bartenders and waiters and waitresses, cooks. And so vehicle drivers, bus drivers, bus conductors. So that generally covers the categories of workers in relation to whom the minimum wages will apply. So I just, I just thought I would clear that up. And of course, we are going around the entire country in these public consultations to hear from you on your input, your experiences as workers in these categories and what, based on your own experience, you think would be a reasonable adjustment to the current minimum wages. But this is not the full extent of the exercise that the committee is, is undertaking. The committee has and continues to engage specific stakeholder groups. So employers, Chamber of Industry and Commerce, the Employers' Federation, the Construction Association, the Hotel and Tourism Association, any, any other bodies that will have a representation from either employees or employers or farmers and so. So they have been engaging in these other types of consultations and also will be conducting a scientific study, a survey, that will also ground the findings or the recommendations that will come to me as the minister to transmit to the cabinet. It will ground it in that it would not just be based on the opinion of the groups with which the committee interact, but also there would be some scientific basis as well. So just to let you know that this is the process. And I hear all the complaints about how unsatisfactory and untenable some of the existing wages are and we entirely agree with you as a government, which is why it was about eight weeks after becoming minister, we set up the Wages Review Committee or Advisory Committee, only eight weeks, because it hadn't been done in twelve years, although the law requires it to be done. So we entirely agree with you that someone working for seven fifty and living in Shanty Mill and working in Land Sapien, well, I mean, I did not say more, you said it all. So we want our people to live better lives, to be able to better afford that basket of goods that you require to take care of yourselves and your families. So that is why we are, we prioritize this exercise so that very shortly, we will have the recommendations coming and then I will switch from Labour Minister to Attorney General and make sure the relevant amendments are made to the law to bring in the new minimum wages. And we hope and intend for those new rates to kick in on January one, 2024. Because we have to be reasonable on all sides, right? We can't drop new wages on employers. Some may have difficulty because they have already budgeted for 2023. So we want to give them enough notice of what is coming in 2024 so that we will have some happy workers and Grenadians all round. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Claudette Joseph, for putting all of those discussions into perspective, right? So as we end this evening, I want to thank you very much again for coming, for taking the time to be with us this evening. I also want to thank the online viewers for being with us every Wednesday. Just before we go, I would want to let you know that our next Wednesday, we would be taking a break. We have to go to Karakoo, but we would be doing Karakoo on the following Wednesday. So this next Wednesday, don't tune in, we wouldn't be here. Tune in the following Wednesday, May seventeenth, Tuesday, the sixteenth, May sixteenth. So we would not be with you next week, Wednesday. The following Wednesday, we will return in Karakoo. So we thank you, online viewers, for your continued support. As we bring this curtain, the curtains down on this evening, I want to wish you a safe journey home. I want to also wish you God's continued protection and blessings on the rest of the week. Thank you very much and do get home safely.